...meeting of March the 16th. If everyone could please write in.
May I say?
It's the second month in a row.
Quickly, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, that's right. The open public meeting statement, please.
Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meeting Act in the annual notice of meetings. A copy was posted on the township website and a notice of this meeting was sent to Sentinel and a copy was posted at the Franklin Township in Mesquite Hill.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Mulady?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Travagano?
Yes.
And Chairman Hatt?
Yes.
Okay, we have a quorum and we're going to seat Mr. Ranson this evening for Mayor Bruhl. Okay, two resolutions. Resolution PB 2301 for Newfield Bank is our motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve PB 2301.
Move in second. Roll call move please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you.
Mr. Constantine, you threatened it?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Mr. Mulady?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Travagano?
Yes.
And Chairman Hatt?
I'm going to abstain. I have a conflict.
Okay, and PB 2302 for Hattback.
Motion to approve PB 2302, Hattback.
And who's our second? I'll move in second of Mr. Kelly. Roll call move please.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Mulady? Mr. Ranson?
Abstaining.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Travagano?
Yes.
And Chairman Hatt?
Yes. Motion Hattback. All right, move on to the minutes of April 18th, 2024.
Yeah, I need to raise another question. It's been a very, they're not exactly what's requested in the minutes here. The staff is not focused on the minutes. The motion, the public motion, Hattback, is not really carried out. So I'll start with this table. And if you can start on the third line where it says, where the word that takes clarified, where I would like to have the committee desk explain how properties that were involved in the development of the property. And they're not interested in the explanation for the Fazio property because that's not documented, documented at all. You can see me, it's no surprise to anybody who looked at this, that piece of land has been developed for a very long time and makes sense to put it in the development. Question that I wanted to ask and even want to have answered for how these other two pieces of property get thrown into the study. They're seen out of nowhere, they're not documented anywhere, and people want to know. People have been asking where, why those two pieces, why do they include the Fazio ones? That's what was asked for, along with asking if there's any future areas that we can look at, that we can maybe provide a written explanation as to why that's due, provided by the board of commissioners, or the two pieces of property should be documented. That is very clear, you know, I want to make sure everybody's clear.
Jim, you can move on.
That's exactly what I asked.
Okay.
Not only last week, clarified, it's important to explain. So I asked for this in March, I asked for April, and I'm asking for it again today.
Okay. Then what I want to do here, Jim, is to capitalize what the minutes approval, that paragraph there, what should be stricken, in your opinion here, what should be stricken and what should be added, how should it be changed so we get the verbiage right? And I want to get the minutes approved.
Well, that's...
With the correction.
So the last three lines should reflect that, it says, explain how the properties, the properties should be identified as, and see if you guys, I don't have a report here, it's where the most of the property was finalized, right? And you identify that as parcel, whatever that is. Right? So let's figure out those other two pieces, that's like what piece of property.
I think it was the other, if I recall, the Fazio property was section three, section one was the northwest quadrant, section two was southwest and pop down.
So then we can say that properties identified as section one and two that were involved in redevelopment.
Hold on, hold on. I want to get that, I want to get that through you to write. Go ahead.
So explain how properties identified as section one and two were included in the study of redevelopment, the study to make a recommendation whether or not it should be prepared for redevelopment.
Okay.
But now, move forward. So what were the requirements, interest expressed in those concessions? Were there any plans? Are there any proposals? Those are the questions that you need to answer.
Okay, and that's going, that'll be in the minutes approval section. When the vote was called for four minutes, there was an objection, and the objection is as stated.
See your opinion.
I'm going for a minute of minutes, but I want to get it capitalized correctly, and then eventually I want to call for a vote. Does anybody else not understand it to be that way, or does anybody else have any other input on that paragraph?
Now, again, it's two parts you left, right? First part is section one and sections two, right? Second part of the request is for any future requests to look at any other letter to be declared, considered redevelopment. And if you want to get an explanation, written explanation, that's law.
Okay. You okay?
Yeah.
All right. Does anybody else have any other input on that paragraph? All right, I want to move to the other, Jimmy, you had a probable or another power, or a comment on another paragraph, where are you at?
Well, just the motion that goes to the public portion, just make sure that whatever gets reflected ties into certain factors in this part. This area is like, last line, Mr. Kelly saying it also retroactive the Fazio. Again, we're not, we're not interested in why Fazio, it's section one and two.
Okay, so now strike Fazio and where it says other properties in certain sections one and two.
And then finally, where is the letter? Again, I'm expecting, I brought up that we had a draft that was born last year, and we voted on having a letter revised, and still no draft.
Okay. All right, Jimmy, hold on that, because that's another, right now I'm dealing with the document, so hold that thought for a moment. Is there any, on this closing, when we close the public portion, is there any other comment or any other opinion on that? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections that were presented this evening. Is there a motion to approve the minutes with the correction?
So my minimum motion, I'll say.
Now, I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. All right.
So, yeah, right. In the letter, where is the letter? We should have had a letter from last month. You know exactly. Well, you can't be that confused. You might be a little confused, but you are, you have to be, right? It's becoming more confusing the more you... No, no, my guy was very clear. And I asked you to go back and watch the video, and so I've not been so confused. You got the second part of my request, 100%, right? How did you get the first part? How did you go through it? Well, first of all, I'm not really confused. I understand that. Well, I bet if you're not, then you should...
I was asking Jim to let you answer.
It becomes more complicated because when you're now trying to get a verbatim statement into the minutes, the minutes doesn't involve verbatim statements, so there's reason the position where I don't know exactly how she's going to put the exact words together unless you go back and does it transfer. Minutes are not transferred. So that's part of why this becomes unclear as we go along. I'll go back to the beginning. The first time the letter was requested, I took away from that the primary purpose of it was for the future. I went back and listened to the tape, and I did hear you say vote, that it was for, that it already been requested after the future. I did hear that. Last month, we discussed it. Joe said we give clarification, but there was no vote on it, no motion made. I felt it was worth clarifying tonight because we develop a plan pending, there's no deadline pending for a decision being made to something that's not even going to happen, if you're retroactive. So I thought it was worth the clarification tonight to make sure that whatever letter is written isn't misconstrued again. So that was the reason, there's no urgency to it, so I thought you'd like to make sure we clarify it. So we're 60 days beyond the request, and it does become a little bit more... Well, I don't know, I don't think there's any redevelopment pending.
A motion was made, it was seconded.
Yes.
It was approved for you to write the letter.
Right.
To the committees. So that the committee could respond on who wanted the other properties besides Fazio and that, why were they listed, and we were looking to get it in writing where the history was for those other two properties. I know it's been asked a lot, to a lot of different people, and there's really no, there hasn't been a answer. So we asked you to put that letter together, have the township committee read it, and we'll spot.
So I did do that, apparently that was correct except for if the prospect of the study got you up.
We haven't seen that letter.
Sorry, the first letter was a false. That one was correct except it was not asked before, what occurred in the passage, as to... I know, but my point is that when you put the first letter together, if it had been circulated and reviewed by the board members, it would be caught in the early stages. Well, but I don't do that, I don't certainly. I respond, because then I have, I could have 11 people editing a letter, I can't send it to one person, I have to send it to everybody. That's fine, send it out via email, and you get comments, so that... It's not the common practice to send a draft out of a letter and have it edited by multiple people. Like, I spent my entire career working with attorneys on almost a daily basis, and whenever I'd ask them to write something for me, a draft, an agreement, letter, anything, I'd get a draft to look at. Before this was... It wasn't a draft, it wasn't requested. But that's a common practice. It's not common practice. I'll be...
Kevin, do we need to do another motion? Motion and get it approved to get the right information?
Yep, and we jump in here now. Kevin, when you referred to the motion in the second on the letter, I listened to both meetings, I went back and listened to the second, the conversation with both meetings. Kevin, the motion in second you're referring to were the first letter that was written, the second letter that was requested, there was no motion in second on that, which is what Michael just brought up. There was a general conversation, and everybody up here on the diocese was in agreement to send a second letter in. If it's a technicality on a motion, then yes, Kevin, you are correct. I need a motion and a second to forward the second letter to address the pre-vote on redevelopment, not the future.
Vote.
Well, the second letter will address vote, but the future was already addressed, the past tied together.
And it should be clear that this is a revised letter from your original letter, whatever the date of that letter was. What I would say is a follow-up to the original letter, the information requested in that letter, we want not only for the future, but from the past. That basically it.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
That's it in a nutshell.
I can do that.
All right. And can we review the draft? I know it's a boat beyond what you're typically doing, but...
I think it's a very, you've seen the first letter, I'm just going to say the same information we want, we want from the prior request, so...
Looking for a little more detail, though, Mike.
Okay, I can say to the draft, I mean, if I'm going to get multiple comments, am I going to keep circulating it until everybody comes to an agreement? I mean, it's not practical. It's not practical at all.
Nah, I don't see that.
Michael, well, first of all, now I got to go for the legal opinion, and you're in the middle of the conversation here, so is there any legal reason not to provide the draft to board members?
A legal reason?
Yeah.
No?
Okay, so let's do it. There will be a 24-hour comment pit, once the draft is released, to all board members. There will be a 24-hour comment period for anybody to comment back. At the end of that 24 hours, the comment period is now, and then will then be closed. Are you okay with that?
Yes, except that we're not violating the Civil Public Meetings Act, we can't...
Exactly.
You can only respond to me.
Yeah, do not, no one is to hit reply all, or to hit only reply and have a conversation directly with Michael, and not amongst the board members, so we don't get into a conflict there.
And I don't want to get into where I'm going to have to communicate with every person regarding their comments and try to make them mesh, I mean, that's just ridiculous, frankly. Not really.
We're not going to drive this out.
Do you need a detail of what was requested in the motion?
I think we just clarified it, it would be the same, it's going to be a reference to the first letter, only saying that it will be applied not only prospectively but retroactively.
Retroactive.
If we get beyond that, then we're going to get into, again, everybody's wording. I mean, it's just frankly, it's not at least a bit practical, I don't know what the purpose of it is.
Mr. Kelly, yes, where did you last come from? It's that...
Well, I think, yeah, and that's why I'm trying to bring this thing to a close. Kevin, you started...
Have you come up with them? I mean, where'd you come from?
Okay. Kevin, you came up, you started with a motion on the second letter, are you willing to include a 48, to have the board members copy on the draft, that there will be a 24-hour comment period, and that no one is to hit reply all, that it's not be a conversation violating the Open Public Meeting. If you're going to comment, you're going to comment directly to Michael.
I would approve that.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
Can we... Go ahead. I agree that timeline, can you get 48 hours in charge?
Sure, sure.
I'm going to...
I'm fine with the...
I want to say something, I mean, Jim seems to be the one that's very adamant about the wording on this, so I think that maybe he should be the one that would be able to take a look at this. To me, if he's okay with it, if you're okay with it, if everybody else is okay with it, I'm likely to ask for you to change it.
Yeah, I'm the same way. I've kind of hit the point there, but I'd like to move on. Yep. All right, Kevin, are you willing to change the 24 hours to 48 hours? Yes. All right, I need a second. Move in second. All in favor? All right. All right, write the letter. Thank you.
Write the letter, and of course, I just want to set this understanding, if I get multiple comments, I'm going to do the final, I'm going to be the...
You have my phone number.
You may ignore them.
We may be six months from now talking about this letter.
You have my phone number. Okay, let's do that. Do I have a second here? We all right? All right. Yeah, we got the approval, we did the vote on the minutes, right? Yes.
Yes.
All right. The public portion, I'm moving down to below the application, let's move, I have a public portion on the buyer application first, let's move to the application this evening, Byers Industrial Services. Councilor, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Dante Parenti with Hoffman de Museo, and here on behalf of Byers Industrial Services LLC. And we were here last month, you recall, we're seeking approval of a minor site plan for my client to have erected a pole barn on their property, on Lot 10, on Fry's Mill Road, which is located in a business zone. I have this evening three witnesses here to testify to address some of the concerns that Mr. Atkinson had raised last month, and some of the concerns that the board engineer has raised, and I think we're prepared this evening to tackle those. Since last month, we did submit some additional information, which I hope the board has received, which is architectural plans of the pole barn, this color artist's rendering of the pole barn, and as well as a detail of the lighting to be used. Mike, you want to get the witnesses all sworn in at once, or...
Yeah, anybody testified last time, because remain on the road, but you have to move.
We have, we never got that far last month.
We didn't.
We did not. So I think everybody's on that.
If you all raise your hand, if you're fascinated about the unit, we can do something but to do something that you got.
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You might as well identify.
Okay, yeah, I have tonight our license engineer, Dan Patterson, our certified planner, Stephen Hawke, and Justin Woods, who's a representative of Byers Industrial. So with the board's permission, I'd start out with Justin to tell the board a little bit about what the plans are with the pole barn. Justin, I know there were some questions last month, this is what the pole barn's going to look like, correct?
Correct.
All right. Now I want to jump right to the landscaping, because I know that was one of the issues raised in the engineer's report. The landscaping that's shown on this artist's rendering, do you plan on doing that?
We do.
We do. So that's not there for just being, you know, that he's going to, they're going to do this landscaping to make it more attractive to those going by. There's another question regarding the stone surrounding the pole barn. That too is going to be done?
Correct, on the front.
Rather than the corrugated metal shown on the architectural plans, we're going to do the stone surrounding it?
We are.
Okay. The height of the pole barn is approximately?
Just over 25 feet.
Just over 25 feet. That was another one of the issues that was raised. Now, my understanding is the pole barn's going to be used simply to give your coworkers a little bit more room to work, correct? All right, so we're not increasing the number of employees?
No.
We're not increasing traffic, or deliveries, or anything like that?
No.
So everything's going to stay the same, except that the workers at the site will be given a little bit more room?
Correct.
Okay. There's a question regarding, on the plan, and this is what we'd begun to talk about last month, and before we pulled the plug, there's some hatch, you're going to be removing some impervious surfaces, correct?
Correct.
And replacing it with topsoil and seeding?
Correct.
Okay. And for the board's edification, the reason we're doing that is to, is so that the amount of impervious surface is, the increase is much smaller than it would otherwise would be with the 3,600 square foot pole barn. Now, the places where you're removing impervious surface and replacing it with topsoil, will that impact parking at all?
No.
Okay. Where's the parking located?
Right here north of the light poles.
Okay, and how many parking spots are on this lot?
Approximately 35.
Okay, and it's going to stay the same?
Correct.
All right. So the board has any other questions of Mr. Woods?
Parking will be behind the existing one-story building.
So existing parking is to the right of the one-story building, and that'll stay.
One additional question I forgot to ask you about this, there was an issue regarding lighting. Where is the light to be located on this pole barn?
Right up front here, right on top above the, over the door.
And we had submitted some lighting details for the board?
Correct.
Now, just to be clear, the light's going to be faced down, pointed down?
Correct.
And there's shading on top of that?
Correct.
All right. And so we had just had that one light?
Correct, that's it.
Now, as far as utilities in the pole barn, it's going to be electric only?
That's it.
That's it, so we're not running water or sewer or anything like that there?
No.
Just electric? Okay. That's all I have, unless the board has other questions, or Mr. Woods?
Do you have any security lighting around the back?
No, there's some on the side currently, right about here, on the existing building.
That's what, yeah, it's not on the new building, but on the one that's already there?
No.
I have a couple of questions, so while you're still up here. So I know one of the concerns of the great last, the last time around, regarding the lights village, I understand you have a wall pack and it's going to kind of have it downward facing. My understanding of how this is oriented onto the site, you have nothing blocking any lights village, it's black, you're still going to have, you know, lights village off the rock. Now, the other question I have is regarding the parking, one thing, but you're showing on this rendering that you have, you know, a gravel area in front of the pole barn, where is that exactly, and if you can just show on the actual plan, look that around, and what is the purpose of that at the same time? Is it going to be access equipment to get in and out of there?
Correct, it's already there actually now.
The pole barns or...
No, the asphalt millings that you're referencing.
So the use of that is going to be to get vehicles in and out of that?
Correct, or equipment, yep.
Can you comment on the lighting aspect?
I can't, I mean, it's a simple wall pack light facing downward, the lights village should be minimal, if any. Our current lights that are on the building are, on the existing one-story, are all faced downward right now, and it creates minimal spillage across the street.
Do you have a lighting plan to demonstrate that? I think that was the one that I think they've made, that requested last time around, first correct.
There are sort of metrics on that. I'll tell you, we got the cut sheets of the lights, I think we went as referencing, we're not expecting you to see a lighting plan of the site plan with the location of the light, and then showing the isometric spread on the site, but it's just one light on the pole barn, right?
That's correct.
With that, I would call Mr. Patterson to answer any questions that the board may have. I know the engineer had some questions regarding, on page six of the report, regarding drainage in the easement.
Yeah, so this design is of fairly minimal impact, and it's not my design, I just want to say that, I'm here to represent this plan on behalf of my client.
Yeah, just for the records, the board is aware, our engineer, who called out last month at the last second, has apparently been ill, so we've been unable to get him to appear, and that's why we have Mr. Patterson here this evening.
Right. So I, you know, made a study of these plans, and as far as I can determine, it's, you know, maintaining the existing drainage patterns, there is a small increase in the impervious coverage. This design attempts to mitigate that by removing some other impervious areas around the site. It can't get it to a net zero, but it does a pretty good job of keeping it small, and I think with some landscaping, perhaps some sort of rain garden type of landscaping, we could probably get, you know, that down to zero. I think that's totally feasible, you know, with minimal effort.
That's, maybe just the words you're using. A couple of comments that appears to, I realize it's not your design, did you rerun the numbers, and are you in a position to verify that the information provided is accurate?
Yes, I can tell you that, yeah, it's the amount of impervious coverage is what it says on the plan, that's correct.
It appears, and I've heard it a couple times, so I just wanted, for the record, to make sure that you give random numbers and confirm that what appears here is correct.
Yes, I am.
Can I jump in real quick?
Sure.
The one thing that we were confused about, and this is why I crossed part of that out in our second iteration of the letter, is there's all the little slivers of like asphalt and crushed stone area that are going to be removed, adding those up and combining them with what's shown on the plan of the, what is it, the net 3,600 square foot building, it says, I think, I think it's 2,606 or 2,806 square feet of net increase in impervious?
Right, that number's actually incorrect, it's actually the last...
Okay, well, then compare that to the zoning chart, where it says max impervious, 52836, existing 57.6, and then proposed 5809, those numbers didn't seem to match up, so can you just confirm what is the actual increase in impervious coverage?
Yeah, the number that I came up with based on these areas was 788 square feet.
Okay, I think that's what we had as well originally. And then I think also in the application form itself, it said there would be zero net increase.
Okay, that was... Yeah, the math was double-checked, and of course mine was wrong, so...
That's why I asked you to...
So, that's right, that's why I, I didn't become an engineer. So, we believe there is a net increase of impervious coverage of 788 square feet, but what we submit is, is a very small amount, the minimus, and we recognize that we now need two variances, C variances, that being one of them.
I'd agree. That's why I was wondering as well, I didn't know what was here with some perp square.
In the key, it says it's an increase of 3,000 square feet.
I think it was wrong, and we will certainly fix that, we're going to have. Yeah, so, you know, obviously your engineer's comments with respect to changes to the plan that he's asked for with regard to signature lines and the like, obviously we're going to do, and, and certainly have no objection with any of those.
So in English, your building's 3,600 square feet, and you're going to remove roughly 3,600 feet of impervious cover, put dirt or plants?
Approximately, yes.
Minus the 788.
Correct, exactly, exactly.
But you're still going to be around 57% impervious cover?
Correct.
When 50% is indeed good.
Correct. And it's currently 57% now, so it's, it's, it won't change significantly.
To make a comment that your engineer has been ill, have you contacted your engineer or any engineer, whether or not this roughly 788 square feet will impact your stormwater drainage issues?
Yes, they contact, contracted me to review this plan, and I'm of the opinion that it will not have an effect.
Where does the water run? Which direction?
Currently, it runs towards an existing drainage ditch.
To the south of the building?
Yes.
Questions, questions, please, I want to do them here. Chris, you want to go first, or you want to go first?
I don't know if they're, rather than doing their.
Oh.
No, we have, we have one more witness yet to be called.
We even talked before the meeting.
Yeah, Billy's come on at 10 o'clock.
I'd like, since Dan's still up, up there, I'd like to add my comments, so he can respond prior to the letter.
Okay, all right.
So.
I'm going to start.
Yeah, I'm going to start with comment A and B, because they kind of go hand in hand. So, based on the testimony provided, you know, it's your opinion that the heat rate runoff increase that may be presented as it currently is depicted can be addressed by installing some form of a BMP, whether that be a rain garden. One of the concerns that I have is, obviously having a rain garden, I think you have a little bit more flexibility versus maybe putting a dry well, is, do we have any ideas as to if that water table, anything of that nature, will we have those impacts that would, you know, adversely impact?
That's why I used the suggestion of rain garden, because I think it's, so everybody can understand, it's, it's not a very deep structure, and absorbs water, uses, you know, natural plants that like water, and as a means of reducing the amount of runoff, as opposed to a dry well system, which would have to be buried deeper into the ground, and we don't really have that information about where the high water table is.
Did you have any chance to run calculations to give an approximate size, roughly of how big this rain garden would be, so we could visualize it on the plan?
I did not do the actual mathematical calculations for that, but an increase of 788 square feet is not going to warrant a, you know, massive storage system.
Where, where would this area be, I guess, depicted, and how would you collect it?
Well, just, my thoughts are just based on looking at this, we're either behind the building, we could put some sort of a rainwater storage, you know, surface rainwater storage area, and there's another area that's grass in between the building and the street here. That may work.
All right, so, the, I guess I kind of answered my next comment with the roof leader discharge location, so is that all going to be collected into an underground system that would eventually be discharged into some form of BMP?
I would say that if the calculations show that it's necessary to intervene in that way, that they will be, yes.
And those calculations will be provided for review?
Uh, yeah, we can run this through HydroCAD, or something can come up with the numbers.
I'm sorry, I was answering again in the microphone, I didn't pick up any appearance.
To the last question?
Yes.
Was that we could run, you know, we could run this model through a HydroCAD software, and it'll tell us the exact runoff?
For the record, I wasn't able to hear, you were sent, you were too far away.
Sticking with the runoff comments, the runoff coming off the existing building, how would that be collected to not adversely impact the proposed building?
Uh, the way that it's currently designed on this plan, he placed, like, a high point in between the two buildings, and directs it around the new building, back to the existing drainage pattern.
So there's going to be regrading in that area? He is at least looking at the plans here, the, the plans that are shown by Mr. Clancy have a high point of 50.8, which is actually lower than the adjacent grade of 50.9, I think and change over there. So I'm assuming that whole area is going to be regraded to accommodate the blow arrows that are shown?
Yes, I think anywhere that there are proposed spot elevations would have to be regraded, and if he's off by some fraction of a foot, or whatever that may be, we could make those adjustments.
Uh, the, the existing slash proposed drainage easement, can you provide some clarification on that? Just to bring to the board's attention, there's a note at the bottom of the plan where it says, if a 40-foot wide drainage easement does not exist, one is hereby granted, I don't know who it's granted by, but there currently exists a 30-foot drainage easement based on the tax bill. Do you have any information on whose easement that is?
We don't, and I'm, I'm going to have to run a title search, see what the easement is, and I can provide it to Mr. Morelli for his, for his review, and if the board deems one, that one is not sufficient, deems one necessary, obviously we will provide one.
There are exist, I would like to add, though, there are existing drainage improvements that would fall outside of that 30-foot easement that's there, so I, I kind of have a strong feeling that there is a 40-foot easement, that just perhaps didn't properly get filed, or paperwork's mislocated, but either way, they're willing to file one.
Would that be part of the county, since it's coming from a county inlet on Fry's Mill?
I mean, without having the document, I would, I would say probably, yes.
All right, then my, my last comment regarding the grading work adjacent to the ditch, whether or not, it's been determined whether it's an environmental sensitive area, you know, as you may be aware, looking at GeoWeb, not this property necessarily, but a few properties back, there's a significant amount of wetlands that's shown. Obviously, it's a ditch that, I, I have not seen the ditch myself, but is it constantly filled with water?
It is not. Justin?
It is not.
Yeah, it remains responsible for obtaining any purpose that may be required for this.
Okay. I, I also looked at the wetlands mapping from NJDEP, and I didn't see anything that impacted this lot.
I don't have any further questions.
One or two questions really regarding engineering stuff, or that are probably more pertly addressed by the engineer, and understanding this wasn't your design, probably to you and the applicant and owner of the property, since you do need a variance for excessive lot coverage, and you are increasing the lot coverage a little bit, since you're already bringing out whatever equipment you need to tear up some of your driveway, your asphalt, is there not any additional space you can remove impervious surface to get that down to 50%?
There is, that we could.
Yeah, I don't know, did you go, did you go over there?
We did not cover that, but no, we, we can, and we don't have a problem removing any other area that would be necessary.
Are we sure it's not going to impact parking?
I mean, that's. No, it wouldn't impact.
And that's, my next question is, that, that sort of stuff would be great to see on an updated site plan, as well as a landscaping plan. You said earlier that the landscaping shown on the rendering that you are going to install that?
Yes.
So I think we would need to see an actual landscaping plan depicting what's, you know, telling us what species they are, and where they're going to be planted, and how many and such, so it's, when the construction inspections are going on, they know what's supposed to be out there, and not just looking at a picture of flowers. Would you have any, have any problems submitting it, getting an actual landscaping plan done and submitting that?
No.
Great.
Just so you're aware, to get down to the 50% max impervious coverage, you're looking at slightly below 45,900 square feet, which based off the existing that you have provided on here, you're talking, what's that, 7,000 square feet of impervious that needs to be removed? So, I mean, that's basically double the size of the proposed pole barn, just so your understanding of that.
Would it be acceptable to remove an additional 788 square feet to get the?
Match pre-existing condition?
Yeah, exactly, be just a existing non-conformity with no change in terms of the percentage of coverage.
Which was the, which was the plan to begin with, that was the intent of removing the impervious surface, was try to get it back to where it was, make it no worse?
I mean, I'm not looking to throw out an exact number, my question was basically, if you're already tearing up the part of the area of the pavement anyway, if you can remove more, can you remove more, and basically, how much can you remove without having a detrimental impact on, on your business operations?
Just not certain as we're standing here, you know.
I appreciate your client being agreeable, but I know the concern is saying yes and no, trying to do it.
Yeah, I don't want to agree to something that we turn out is, is undoable, I'm, I'm certain we can, we could do the 788 square feet without impacting parking, and without disrupting the business.
Correct.
Because that was the intent all along.
Yeah, I, I guess I have one to piggyback off of Chris's comment. The parking is on the, let's just say the northwest portion of the site, from my understanding of how it was described, is that correct, where it's still, it says lot 10?
Correct.
So where the, the new proposed pole barn is going, what is over there, are there multiple driveway cuts?
It's just a dirt lot right now.
It's a what?
It's just a dirt lot right now.
No, no, I'm talking specifically where it says stone and crushed paving, that goes off basically to the curb one.
Yes.
And the county just did new curb in front there. Is it, is there a depression there, or is it a full face curb to where you can't actually physically access it from the street?
Uh, depression, yeah, there's, they haven't repaved the roads yet to meet, I guess, the access point yet.
Can you clarify, do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, he's asking if the curb, is the curb there, does it drop so you can drive over it?
Currently, yes.
How many curb cuts are there on that side? Is there one, is there two?
There's only one.
There's only one, so the area that's near the 1118 that is showing stone all the way up, at least based off my understanding of the dashed lines on here, is that a location that?
It's interesting what he's asking.
Where's it?
So, right here you're referring to?
Yeah, because it looks like I can see to the right there, there's clearly a curb cut based off of the elevations.
Correct.
But is there something over to the left, or just overspill over to that location?
So, right over here is a mixture of dirt and grass, and then this is the millings leading up, there's millings right here, and an access road right here.
Yes, I, I get that. My point is, where you're showing that area that's being removed?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the whole rest of the area in front of there also?
Correct.
I mean, so I think moving additional impervious, or areas that may be considered impervious, you know, to reduce the impact, I think is beneficial, decrease in runoff, have an area for perpulation. I just don't see the neatness of that stone right there, there's no driveway. I understand that.
Right, well, I, I, I'm, I'm certain we have no problem removing as much of the impervious surface as possible without interfering with the operation of the business or the parking. I just can't, as we stand here, tell you how much that is, I'm certain we can do at least the 788 square feet, so that the net change of impervious surface is zero, even with the, the new, with the pole barn. That, that I, I, we can represent, we can do, and to the extent we can do more, I'm sure my client has no problem that.
In layman's terms, I think I understand where the question that it has with the amount of coverage out there. Is he, is there an intent to enter the pole barn for Fry's Mill Road? Is that the, is that the curb cut that we're talking about, and the stone coming out to Fry's Mill Road?
Entering the building would come.
How does entering the building?
From the roads that are currently on the property already.
So internally?
Internally.
So there's no traffic coming in off Fry's Mill Road entering from the pole barn?
Only people coming to work.
Or is traffic coming along Fry's Mill Road?
Coming to our building behind it, yes.
But not to the pole barn?
Not to the pole barn.
He was asking about the pole barn.
That's okay.
Yes.
There's no truck coming in off Fry's Mill Road?
To the building, no.
Going to the pole barn?
No.
They're coming in off a grant around the internal property?
Correct.
And swinging in, which takes it back to, and is, do you need to take that all the way out to Fry's Mill Road?
Uh, technically, no, we don't.
Which would encourage somebody to try to jump the curb, or exit the building property off, we could go see millings all the way out to Fry's Mill Road. Is that, is that?
Yeah, I mean, from a logical standpoint, if you're going to remove an area, if there's no access points of Fry's Mill, but there, I would think that's a logical occasion to continue to do it, if that's what you need.
Yeah.
I see what you're probably, probably thinking. Somebody adding on the map, they can exit out of the pole barn, and drive out Fry's Mill Road, and that's going over top of the curb, or somebody trying to turn into the park. How much jack says needed in front of that pole barn for operation?
Um, I think our biggest item that we would need to get in there, probably, what's the point?
Right now, you got 57 feet in the front of that pole barn to, to the curb.
I'd say maybe 40 feet, estimating.
So roughly another 17 to 20 feet could be.
Roughly.
Chris, you have any?
I don't know, I think that's in terms of what is the additional testimony provided tonight, or if we've seen a lot of help.
Okay. No, thank you. Uh, you want to do your part, please?
With that, I would offer the, Stephen Hawke, our certified planner. Okay.
Heard the comments.
I have heard the comments. I actually got another benefit associated with the application, thanks to that. So my name is Stephen Hawke, Hawke Planning LLC, licensed planner in the state of New Jersey since 1994, and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners since 1995. And I've been practicing planning since 1988, and so it's been a while. I've been asked to give some planning testimony tonight on the variances, and essentially, there's one variance, which would be that variance, because you need two additional acres when you have a separate building. And that's a C variance, I would say it's reconciled under C2, the benefits substantially outweighing the detriments. The benefits that I see is that there's going to be enhanced visual environment. Right now, that's an open field, there are some trucks that park there, and there are some things outside, so that would now be indoor activity, and there would be just this beautiful building on that side, and the, the visual environment is going to be increased and enhanced on that side. It's one of the nicest pole barns I've really ever been associated with, especially with the stone wainscoting, and the, the fact that all that landscaping is going to go in front. Now, with even additional impervious coverage being removed, and some more grass areas, it's even going to be more attractive. So I think that's one thing on the benefit side. Also, you know, a more efficient use of the land, you hate to see another two acres needed and to be gained by the applicant just for 3,600 square feet. This is a site that has a 15,000 square foot building, and that 3,600 square foot building is only roughly an 18% increase. If you look at that whole industrial corner on the 13 acres in total, there's probably about 80,000 square feet there, so this 3,600 square foot building is roughly 5%. It's really a small increase on that overall industrial cluster. So, I, I don't feel, I mean, I do feel that it's an efficient use of the land to allow the variance, and to allow this small, separate building exists without the additional land. Obviously, now with more impervious coverage being removed, and more per-. Um, obviously now with more impervious coverage being removed and more percolation area, it helps with the environment, so there's no further degradation of the environment. That's another purpose of zoning. So I think those are on the positive side. As far as the negative side goes, uh, prong one is no substantial detriment to the public good. And that's essentially, does it fit into the neighborhood? Is it something that's out of character with the neighborhood? Or is it something that would take away, detract from the neighborhood? And this neighborhood is essentially that industrial cluster of that 80 or 80,000 or so square feet on those 13 acres with some farms and a few homes. Uh, most of the homes that are nearby are the three homes that are closest to the southeast of the site. So this neighborhood is essentially staying the same with a slight increase, that 3,600. So I don't feel that it's a substantial detriment to the public good because of that as well. Um, as far as prong two, no substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Uh, this is a permitted use, so it's not like we're, we're talking a use variance and it's a, a use that's out of character or something that's not permitted in the zone. This is a permitted use. Most of the standards are met. Um, the front yard is met by quite a bit. Um, for this new addition, it's even further back than the existing building, 66 feet versus 50. The side yard is met on both sides, 113 on one side and 42 on the other. And the structure coverage, there is an allowance to have 30,000 square feet. I mean, I'm sorry, 30% of the lot covered by structures and we're gonna have 20% after all is said and done. We could actually, if we were going over impervious and didn't have to, um, seek a variance for that, if we had another 8,500 square feet, we would still meet that 30%. So there's a lot of room to go with, um, buildings. So because of all of that, because of the fact that there's some benefits and there's some, um, very, very small negatives, both on the, um, the public welfare side and also the impairment side, I feel that the variance can be granted, the C2 variance can be granted. That's all I have.
Thank you.
The board have any additional questions rather than myself, my witnesses?
I have one question to get back to the pole barn rendering. And I, I probably misheard when you stepped in the beginning. If I heard correctly, there's gonna be, the stones will be increased on the pole barn? Or is that the look that's gonna be there or is it gonna be all stone front?
No, that, that, that's the look. I think, uh, there was a comment regarding the, the stone surrounding the pole barn. And there was a que-
The architectural drawings, the actual elevation that identifies material did not show any stone on the base of the building. So then I noted, the rendering shows that stone on the base. So it's the, call it wainscoting or like a skirt on the front. I wanted to clarify. Usually, I see this a lot with the, the rendering, the artists doing the rendering take some licenses and say, I'm gonna make this look a little prettier and they add the landscaping and things. So I want to make sure what you're seeing is what they're actually proposing to build.
I didn't hear any, I haven't heard, I see it. Is there any signs, uh-
No new proposed signs.
No signs, okay. All right. Anybody else? Questions open to the public? Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna open the public in a second. I'm gonna, of course, it's on the board, the applicant, this time I entertain a motion open public, uh, open this hearing to the public. Does move in a second? All favor? Aye. Okay. We're open to the public at this point on the, this application.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Howie Atkinson, 1112 Frye's Mill Road. And if I may, continue under oath from the previous public portion. And I do have a, a few questions and comments. Would you prefer me to direct those to the, the chair?
Direct to the board and then we'll turn around and get on the entry afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I just want a little more clarity on, as to the, the use of the building. Uh, they said they're expanding the area that their employees currently work at, but we really haven't established what they're actually doing. I think, uh, basically from the visual, from living close by, there's a lot of mechanical work, maintenance work, but it's still not clear what that, uh, operation is in that building and what it'll be expanded to in the new portion of the building. Um, one other, do you want to handle them one at a time or you want me to just do done?
No, let's go to them all and then I'll bring them up afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other issue I had on the lighting, I know they're proposing one, one lot and I believe it's a 50 watt LED light. I was, uh, I'm wondering if they've considered scaling that down to a 25 watt LED light. Um, I'm sure they probably make the same, manufacturer makes the same physical light maybe in a 25 watt instead of the 50. Um, another item is, um, they currently store their trash totes outside of the building. Uh, maybe we can move them to an inside storage so they're not as sightly. Um, the other issue would be, um, no outside storage in front of the building for, for materials or, you know, maybe vehicles being worked on, things like that. Maybe they'll either be inside or to the rear of the building. Um, and that would be materials and/or the, the equipment. Um, the, um, other thing I was considering, and this may be a question for the applicant and his engineer, um, the building currently shows approximately 57 foot setback from the road and there's, um, I think a 70 foot rear yard setback. Um, maybe the building might look a little better, have less impact towards the front of the site if the building was maybe moved back 20 and have the 70 foot setback and a 50 foot rear yard setback. It currently has approximately 70 rear, 50 front. Um, whether that might work, um, for them and be better for the area. Uh, because we, as we all know, uh, even though we have the B-zone there, uh, across the way, we do have the RA-zone. And I might respectfully make a comment for the planner, although that is a B-zone consistent with B-zone, when we have two zones that come together, we want to ensure that the development of the zones kinda don't clash too much with each other. Um, I would like to make a comment towards the drainage. From my experience out there, there's never been any issues with the drainage. Um, and that drainage easement that runs on the south side of that property is an open, um, drainage easement. Uh, I don't know whether that could be utilized to just slope that property so the water runs into that open drainage easement and kinda keeps all the drainage in that area where it needs to go. So that, that might be something they might want to look at. And, um, also just from my own observation out there, there is actually three, three curb cuts along that site. There's, um, one on the south end closest to that drainage easement. Uh, there's another one in front of the existing structure, uh, and then there's another one on the north side. So there are two, two curb cuts down there on that, uh, south side, just to clarify that a little bit. And, um, that's, uh, again, I appreciate what they're doing with the landscaping. The landscaping is a necessity out there and it'll look quite well. And once it's established, the vegetation is going to be used out there. And, um, that's pretty much it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Well, I, what I'd like to do, rather than calling the next speaker up, I would like to have your professionals come back up. We're leaving the public session open. Have your professionals come back up and let's address these before I lose track of where I'm at.
Let's start with-
With regard to the use of the building, and Justin can confirm this, my understanding is it's gonna be used for the same thing that the main building's being used for. It's just gonna be getting them a little additional room. So it's nothing, nothing new, nothing, uh, nothing different.
So what is that, what is, what is that?
What do you do?
So this, the current one-story building is currently used for storage and light fabrication. So it's just a continuation of that.
Light fabrication?
Correct.
Of what?
Uh, steel, uh, piping, electrical components. Some welding, yep.
And there's no, uh, well, you, you were former DMO, right? Yeah, I was going with the, I'm thinking more of a mechanical repair type of thing and oil and water and stuff like that. But what I'm hearing is that that's really not what you're doing. You're more on the fabrication side, uh, rather than, uh, machine repairs.
Correct.
So there would be very little concern about, uh, oil and leakage, environmental issues.
Correct.
Another report, please. What are the hours of operate?
Uh, 7:00 AM to 3:30.
How many days a week?
Monday through Friday.
What exactly do you fabricate?
Uh, piping. Um, uh, well, so some of our customers don't like us coming on site and being invasive to their project, so we can prefab a lot of the components that we do. So it could be runs of pipe, elbows attached, or we could be building-
EMT, right?
Could be conduit, could be EMT, could be building control panels off-site and then installing on-site, so.
Okay. Tony, my second note is, uh, Mr. Atkinson asked about the lighting, which shows 50 watts. He's questioning whether it'd be 25 watt and how does that impact the site?
We could de-
We could do that.
We could decrease to the 25.
And, although he didn't ask for, uh, the, the lighting again would be shielded and uh, no, no, obviously the-
Point.
Should be no lighting whatsoever leaving the property. Uh, so we, we can address the, any existing issues as well in the existing building if there's any lighting on the property that's leaving the property.
Sure.
Last month, Mr. Atkinson, under testimony, stated that in the evening, he could see a glow of light reflected or the shadow of the light of his house rear. Based upon his comments, I did an onsite inspection last evening at 9:30 on a non-mu lit night. I parked on your property and I walked on Mr. Atkinson's lawn and driveway and I saw my shadow, uh, obviously on the other side of Frye's Mill Road. Can we do something about the current lighting to satisfy Mr. Atkinson? You're a neighbor on the excess lighting that's escaping your property.
We could look to do something.
You don't have to do that. It's a good, it should be better than fixing.
For existing?
For existing. Yeah, light, lights not supposed to leave the property, so-
We can lower the wattage.
This application, based on this application, no, he doesn't. Uh, being part of a good neighbor and preventing a zoning violation, it would be, uh, it would be a smart move.
Correct. In order to work with him, we would, we could definitely lower the wattage.
Yeah, just so, the, the question is that-
Yes.
You know, the applicant, the application itself is based on the pole barn and that, and that's the light that we're talking about.
Correct.
Hearing the previous testimony, it's a, it's a conversation that, you know, may help, uh, may help.
Sure.
And just so the board is aware, I, I believe Mr. Atkinson had raised an issue regarding the lights previously and they did turn them down.
Yeah, some years, some years ago, yes.
Yeah, and, and they did turn them down, which helped and, and they'll help and they're willing to do, go another step and reduce the wattage.
And if I, if I may interject, there's, they also have a couple of lights in the back there that are totally unshielded that are kinda maybe out of adjustment, they're just kinda still, still over that, uh-
On that particular building or?
Uh, out behind your, like you have that second building in the back that you rent.
Correct.
Uh, you got some lights back there that are up and I mentioned that a couple of years ago when over there and they were able to shield that and adjust it down. So it's, it's, maybe keep an eye on some of those lights and maybe to get out of adjustment over time.
Sure.
Yeah.
I want to tie his third and fourth comment together, and the third being, uh, addressing the trash, uh, trash issue in the containers and also outside storage, uh, in the front of the new building. If you can address both those comments, please.
Sure. We could easily bring the trash cans inside the current building or into the new proposed building and park no vehicles.
And the new, and the new building obviously will help in that regard. We've got more area within which to put these things.
Correct.
And, uh, the front of the building, uh, there would be no outside storage there in front of the new building.
Correct.
So Mr. Chairman, is that the only area, no outside storage or materials or equipment just in the front of that building or any other part of the property or?
Uh, gentleman for discussion. Uh, what I heard from Mr. Atkinson was, uh, he was addressing the front of the building, uh, you know, the, uh, I'm, I'm answering the question based on what I heard.
I'll clarify for the purposes of the resolution.
I, when you're staying in front of the building, that's Frye's Mill Road?
Yes. What, and your comments on that, on your vote on that, please? Yeah, on, on the outside storage issue. We're, we're basically, we're looking at a corridor, we're looking at the Frye's Mill Road corridor and having outside storage there, uh-
Stuff outside.
Are we, are we, are we okay with the front, are you okay with-
It's very easy to-
Just stay in the front of the building?
It's very easy.
Yeah, I, I mean, of course, I don't know if you want to comment a little bit on that.
I, I mean, all I can say is, obviously the preference is no outside storage in the front. I don't know how much stuff they're currently storing in front of the existing building and if they have, uh, how much they can move either to the back or, I don't know if they can access anything behind the pole barn if they put stuff back there, how much they can go in this pole barn. To the extent you can, anything that's, that you don't have to store in front of the building is, is gonna be in front of the store. I, I don't know how much space is needed. I mean, you got your parking lot, I don't know how much, just having driven by a few times not in the last week or so and then looking at Google Maps, it looks like your parking area isn't exactly in the order exactly where parking spots are and you've got some company vehicle and some other stuff that gets stored there. Um, so even though it's not in the front yard, it's still visible as you drive by, I don't know if they have the space to clear up everything. But to the extent you can, we'd like to see no storage in front of the pole barn and or in the very front of the existing building.
Sure. That can be done.
We have to quantify how much stuff they've got, how much space is needed to store or they would be able to put in, say no storage anywhere.
Equipment will be stored.
Equipment will be stored.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the, uh, sixth comment was, uh, location of the building and have you looked at the back, uh, have you looked at the, whether the pole barn could be placed further, deeper into the lot with 70 feet available behind the pole barn?
Yeah, my concern is that pushing it back further would create a little bit of a sense of the building being pushed back instead of being a little bit more even with the front of the other building to kinda make it a little bit more seamless. If we push it back an additional 15 to 17 feet, I believe is what he was proposing. I feel like it, to be honest with you aesthetically, I feel like it would look a little silly.
And, and down the road, they plan on updating the existing building so that it meshes with this one. Yeah, that's, that's a plan, is to give it a facelift.
Correct.
So that's another reason why-
Uh, at that point or, uh, prior to doing that, is it possible to take the landscaping of the new building and tie that, that landscape you're close to pointing from the new building into the existing building to, uh, tie, tie it in together?
That is the goal, is to make that building look, to match that and make it look a lot nicer. Correct.
All right. And, uh, the drainage, uh, oh yeah, I, I brought, I brought drainage down. What was the, uh, your last comment on the drainage?
Again, I, I, I just wanted to, uh, just clarify for the board a little bit, some of the, the drainage, how I, I see it out there. There's a, never, really, there's never a drainage problem out there. And there's an open, uh, that drainage easement that runs to the south side of that property is an open drainage, uh, pit, if you will. And, um, it, maybe it would make sense just to kinda slope that site back to that, um, open easement if, if that's something that can be done. I don't know, it'll be up to the engineers and they're like-
That's what I'm thinking now.
And that's where everything goes now.
That's the goal is to-
That's the line to count, you just put all that drainage.
They're right, that might, but that might just make sense to, um, you know, slope it back towards there and just keep everything where, not, not start doing a whole lot of unnecessary drainage.
We want to maintain the existing drainage pattern as closely as we can. The only thing was if we had to, an excess runoff, we'd have to mitigate that before it gets there and slope down.
And that's, yeah, engineers can figure all that out.
Okay. All right. All right. At this time, we'll continue with the public portion. Anyone else?
Good evening. Chris Sayers, 184 Malaga Lake Boulevard. So-
You have a comment on this application, right?
Yes. Oh yeah, don't worry. Sure.
It's fantastic, I think it'll be true, I'll be with the crew as well.
So help be God, I do. Um, so, I, really, I normally don't care too much about smaller water runoff issues, but my only concern is the fact that pending current litigation, there could be a solar farm right across the street from Byers Industrial. farm right across the street from Byers Industrial. One of the township's largest farms might be turned into one of the county's largest solar generation farms. And this solar farm, actually I have printed out maps. I don't know if anybody wants a map or not, just to kind of show what I'm looking at here.
Thank you.
So, this kind of goes into all the. So as you can see, the area, the area in gray in the map is wetlands and streams. And where the proposed solar farm is, it's wedged on high ground just above those two wetland areas. And Byers, not their responsibility, not their fault at all, is right across from the solar field. So currently, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection exempts photovoltaic panels in calculations of impervious cover for stormwater permitting. So they consider them, you know, to be drainable because they're separated, they're not one solid surface of glass. But despite this, studies and news reports show that these panels can cause water runoff and soil erosion if specific, site-specific preventative measures are not properly implemented. Yes.
How does that affect, we're here, we're not here for the solar.
No, 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 no. Absolutely.
I'm aware of the county, the county. This application on the other side of Gray Avenue, how, please keep your comments to this point.
Yeah, this is, this is all preference before, preference before that. So again, these can still cause water runoff issues. Now Byers Industrial is across the street from this proposed solar farm. The current proposal from Byers calls for increasing the amount of impervious services on their site, or at least the plan did. I know they made some commitments tonight that maybe they can reduce that. So Mike, so right now their site is 50%, or I'm sorry, right now regulations call for no more than 50% impervious. As the plan had showed, a CME had written up that 57% is currently impervious, but it's grandfathered in. And they were, they proposed to increase that impervious substrate. So with the possibility of the solar farm next door in between these two wetland areas on high ground, but the Byers asked for and CME agreed that they should be required, they shouldn't be required to submit an internal surface draining plan, a soil test for stormwater permeability, and a sediment erosion plan. And again, I know the runoff of this site might be minimal compared to the solar field, but the fact that these two areas are going to be together, you're already increasing water runoff in this section and, and the solar field probably will increase runoff as well, that I think we should take pause to, to give them a variance to allow for water runoff in the, this, this site in particular. Or at least these studies should be done, hydraulic studies should be done to, to show that the water runoff would be minimal and not as impactful. Because again, this by itself probably is minimal, it probably won't do a whole lot. But this combined with maybe a solar farm might be very detrimental for the residents in the area and for the surrounding wetlands and streams. So it's just something to think about personally.
No, their test, I thought they said that they were going to increase it 788 square
feet.
Very remarkable.
Yeah, 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 no, I, I listened to that. I'm just saying.
We're getting back to.
But there's been no studies done, that's what I'm saying. We, and then the residents.
Can I just say, unless I'm misremembering, they agreed to provide the calculations necessary for, for this application.
Yes.
Has not been provided, but they had already agreed to.
Yeah, that was basically my ask when I came up here is just to make sure that these things for the residents who live in the area, because I've been contacted by the residents about this solar farm and about, not necessarily the Byers, but because this is also going to increase water runoff, or at least it seemed like it would have before in the plan.
Just to clarify your comments, we did not allow them not to provide calculations of any sort.
Okay.
They agreed to that, so.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chris, that's what you're about to be hoping to truth up and let the truth out, you got.
I do. Thank you. Barbara Halpern-Harding Highway. I just had a couple of questions. I assume the existing building is pretty old. Does anyone know how old it is?
There's probably two people in the room who know that, maybe Mr. Kennedy.
And what do you got?
It shows up on the 1981 aerials for the first time.
Around 1972.
Okay. Does anyone know where the septic system is and the well for this building? Is it on the plans, gentlemen?
Well, the man who identified on the plan. Right in front of them, but what I get Barbara, since they're going to increase in their, in their employees and assuming that that's not going to generate additional flow, you know, they would, they would not need to increase the services.
I understand what you're saying, but.
They need to go to the board of health.
Okay. Because we're not just talking about a storage building, we're talking about a storage building and a shop, basically, area in the building.
A shop is in existing condition, a storage building, there's testimony that there's no plumbing whatsoever in the storage.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
The number of people on site haven't changed.
I know. I heard that.
There's no plumbing whatsoever in the building.
Yes, I know.
It's.
Can you let me testify to what I, where I'm going? Because I get all that, I understood that, I heard it all perfectly. Okay, here's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that we're adding a building that's going to be used for two uses. It's going to be a storage building and it's going to also have some shop area where they're going to do some fabricating. Okay? So there's going to be some occupancy in that building. And whatever occupancy, isn't it true that under the codes that to have occupancy in a building, you must have water and sewer that's approved? So my question becomes, we don't have water and sewer to this, but yet it's more than just a storage building. Byers may own it forever, for 100 years, but they may not. And they may never have more employees, but that really isn't significant. What's significant is what the building is going to be used for and that, in my opinion, as the person who was at the county, who did do the plan reviews, this would be an increase in flow. And this, I hate to say this because I really think the applicant's really nice guy and I think some of the comments he's gotten were a little over the top and he's been real cooperative, but in my mind, based on my experience, because it's going to have a shop area, appears to me that it's an increase in flow. And I am a former registered environmental health specialist, 25 years at Gloucester County. And that is my concern, is that you have a building with occupancy, but you don't have water and sewer. You have a building that creates flow, even if you don't say there's more employees, the fact that it's set up to be those two uses gives a flow. So that's why I comment, whether you answer that or not, you know, like I said, I heard what the applicant said, I understand where you're coming from, but as far as codes and septic and they came across my desk at the county, I'd say it's an increase in flow. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing as known at this time, I entertain a motion to close, I make that motion. I have a motion. We'll have a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Back to the applicant, there are a couple of people that spoke after Mr. Atkinson who will comment on, in the public comment.
The only thing I would add is, is as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, with regard to the impervious service, we're going to, it's going to be at worst, a net change of zero we propose, and we think we can do better than that. So if anything, the situation's actually going to be better there because we're fairly confident we can remove more than just the 788, so that 88 square feet. So the situation's actually going to improve rather than get worse to alleviate those fears. And, and as we've pointed out, and as you've pointed out, there, we have no proposal for any water and sewer there because there's going to be no increase in employees. The situation over there is not going to change. We are literally just giving ourselves a little bit more room within which to work and that's the whole purpose. And for those reasons, I, I think the application should be approved. Thank you.
For the record, can we know the number of employees that are on the site?
25.
Thank you.
I do have a question regarding the landscaping. I, I believe it was previously requested a landscape and plan be provided, assuming the plans need to be revised based off of the testimony provided tonight. We recommend that a plan be provided to our office for review, to our landscape architects to review the proposed, et cetera, et cetera. You okay with that?
We're okay with that, but we hope to have it looking as it does on the artist's rendering, just to be clear, so we're, you know, that's.
I'm assuming it's going to be a revised plan addressing everything we talked about. Before they even start doing anything on site, there'd be a revised plan to include all the changes, all the comments, so that way the inspections can be based upon that. Yes. So, okay, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Michael, the one piece I have here and I guess the question to you is, much earlier on, on the, on the plan, on 016, if a 40-foot wide drainage event does not exist, one is here by granted. That's not being granted by this board. The assumption with that would not be that it's being granted by this board for the record, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I get that on the record because I don't know who's granting it, but it ain't us.
I think they were saying that they would be willing to do that.
That they would be willing to go get a 40-foot, understood. I just want, want a little clarification there so those who come back will hear. All right.
Another comment, should this application move forward to resolution? I would like to see the language that no certificate of occupancy be given to the building until the 788 square feet of excess impervious cover is removed. Since there is a drainage issue on site, are you accepting that?
Absolutely. Absolutely, yeah. No objection.
I'll make a motion to approve the Byers' industrial services application with the things that they agreed to for this application and then the board.
My second.
And John, the, rather than listing out all of the conditions that were agreed to through the, through the.
Michael, okay, we have the resolution and I'll, I'll work with that to make sure.
Okay. I have a motion, second. We'll call it, please.
Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
I'll say.
Mr. Stradine?
Yes.
And Chairman, what?
We, well, I talked about it before, how many votes you have, how many yes votes you have, so we can get everybody on there.
Did you get your speed?
Yes.
Oh, I thought since he moved, since he seconded it.
Okay. Call him, everybody.
Okay. Mr. Spade?
Yes.
All right, you have your five votes?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to abstain. I would have voted yes if it was necessary because I have a business relationship that I brought up the last meeting, just to be on the cautious, safe side. I'm going to, even though I would have voted yes, I'm going to abstain on the vote because of business conflict. We do work, we do contractual work with them. That was discussed at the last meeting and our attorney told me I was fine based on the conversations of two of your students. Okay. All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Eric.
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Thank you.
What I think I'd like to do, Michael, I'm going to public in a second here, but why don't we talk about the correspondence that they came in from the county, Danzer's comments earlier? Let's, let's address that under correspondence, please.
Okay. I think, hopefully you all have taken a look at that. I know it, when it came out and got put on the website, I think there's been some public interest in it. That's the Gloucester County Public Notice of Scoping Hearing, Proposed Green Acres Major Diversion Scotland Run Park. So essentially, they're giving us notice that they're considering a request by the solar company that is proposing, going to propose the solar field to run their transmission lines. And they have to run those transmission lines, a subsurface electrical line through parkland, and that's the Scotland Run Park via a 30-foot wide easement for approximately 1,640 feet. So the only additional information I have on that is that they're going to be providing replacement acreage. So the area that they're going to use for the transmission line is 1.12 acres. The replacement parcels are supposed to be 8.38 acres. Doesn't tell you too much, doesn't tell you what's being disrupted as far as the park and the activities and what's involved with the construction or what the future access issues will be. So the, this will be the subject of a hearing and the hearing is going to be on June 13th at 6:00 PM at the Gloucester County Office of Government Services in Clayton. And then written comments can be submitted until June 27th. So we thought it was appropriate for it to be brought to the intensive board because it does affect practical management and this is the planning board, so I think the planning board have a right to have some, some say, if, if you wish, to actually make a comment for or against. On my touch base with Yola Joe, who made a comment that we wouldn't necessarily make a comment now because we haven't really, we haven't heard it and we haven't seen the actual plan. So the question becomes, you know, do we send somebody to the meeting, does somebody from the planning board go, do I go, or does that go, just to make sure we know what this is all about, where to decide at their June meeting if they'd like to make a comment for or against. So the timing was good for us to address it tonight.
All right. So with that said, Michael's correct, we had a conversation today, there is no solar field application coming before the planning board at this time.
The form submitted, it's under review, the board members have seen nothing on it. So on that subject, I don't think you have a conflict because at this point, you're just dealing with, with the county's presenting to you. Doesn't mean you're for or against the solar, you're just.
Well, we have an interest.
Good or bad planning.
Right, we have an interest. I love your opinion and given this, and give the board's input here, is that our professionals should attend the meeting, bring comments back, present it to the meeting and determine whether or not we have a response. We are an interested party and if we have comments, we can hold that in June and submit the comments to the county, including your timeline of June 24th. All right, now, obviously we can, though, as a group, or if any of these board members wanted to go, they're more than welcome to go, but I believe our professionals should be representing us at that meeting. Okay? Everybody's good with that?
Okay. I like the board member should go, I'd like to see some more.
That's what I'm saying, the, if the board members are interested to go, we certainly could, but I think it's important for the professionals to be there and represent us as an interested party.
Just as a note of reference, working for farm representation, I've worked closely with the neighbors and I've made some inquiries, standing in the middle of the market, he was asking about this about two weeks ago. This project is for an underground electrical wire on already preserved property that we, the residents of Gloucester County, we have two parks in Gloucester County that are parks that are the county owned, Atkinson and Scotland Run. That land, we as a population own it and that land was paid for with the consent, matching funds by Green Acres. Green Acres has a very long handbook on how to move things around that are preserved and what can and cannot be done. Page 106 to 112 reflects exactly on this issue. And Green Acres says, yes, it can be done. However, the trade of land comes in. If you take an acre, 1.1 acre from us, which is the third by 1,640 feet, you have to give us another 1.1 acres elsewhere that is available to the public for public use at no charge. So that's a trade, that's the big call of the scope. Whether or not we as a town agree or not, we buy our engineers to come back to us. But as far as the regulations of the Green Acres, they're on top of it and all this has to be done before even done to us to see if it is feasible. And it is feasible.
Okay, this time, air travel motion, open to the public portion, general public portion. Will you say all favor?
Aye.
All right, we're public portion, tell you what, which to approach, please. Where public portion, I tell you what, which is to approach, please.
Hello. Leo Vesalo, 560 Delsey Drive. Now, good evening. How are you?
I'm good.
That's right. Just a question related to this whole solar thing, and I don't know that it's necessarily something you can answer, but I want to bring it up anyway. I brought it up at the township committee meeting, and I didn't get an answer. Basically, this is the Grotchowski Field that Solar One wants to develop. They want to put a solar farm there, and it came before the zoning board mid-last year and to see if solar was an approved use for that property. And at that time, I believe Mr. Borelli recommended that it was not. The board voted, there were seven members seated that night, including one alternative, which was Andrew Hamel, who is an employee of All American Landscaping. So he shouldn't have been voting on this issue because we all know that Tim Doyle farms that property. He did vote on it, and by a vote of four to three, it was determined that that solar was not an approved use in that zoning. The applicant then sued the township, and I believe the zoning board as well, and won in court, and the court said, no, this is an approved use. Two ordinances that the township passed were also overturned by the court related to solar panels. So the odd thing here is there's a lot of moving parts that seem to keep coming back to the same players, and I'll mention Mr. Borelli as one, because I'd asked Mr. Doyle, you know, is it true that Mr. Borelli's represented you privately as an attorney? Yes, he has. Is it true that Andy Hamel works for you? He denied it, but, you know, maybe he's being tricky because he works for his wife. But he works for All American Landscaping, clearly has a vested interest in that property, should have recused himself. Now we have a situation where somehow, according to E Courts, there's been a notice of appeal filed by the township or the zoning board or both, I don't know which, but I've never seen where either one of those decisions were made by the township or by the zoning board. And now we have a situation where you're saying, professionals, go represent us, the planning board, about this related situation, which is the running of the cables from that same exact solar field. I mean, not for nothing, but it seems like a little bit of a lot of, you know, a very small circle that benefits that same very small circle again and again. I think it'd be in your best interest to maybe take a look at it yourselves.
Thank you. So two, introduce yourself.
Why, I certainly would. Harry Kennedy, 1578 Fryes Mill Road. And I'm going to go in two very diverse directions tonight, and I'll start with, I'll start with the more pleasant one. I want to say that I make a lot of mistakes. I've been in the governmental process for a long, long, long time, even longer than Joe Petch, which is a really long time.
Long time.
I know. I've worked as the Director of Government Relations for a very large corporation. I've traveled all over the country, indeed the world, met with a lot of people, and met a lot of people, good, bad, indifferent, and some so bad I had to take a bath by the time I got home. But this particular board, I want to say, if I was going to write a book about profiles and courage in Franklin Township, I might start with this board. It took an awful lot of courage to table that resolution back in December. I'm sure a lot of you will be departing in sometime in the near future if Mr. Stipick and Deputy Mayor Flame are any indication, or maybe you won't, because maybe some of the people that are not here tonight will be departing even before you. Who knows? It's the vagary of politics. But to you people that stood up, I made mistakes. I make bad mistakes in assuming that because someone's related to someone, they might not be on the up and up or do the right thing. Some of the people on this board absolutely stood up and did the right thing, and thank you. It was courageous, it was the right thing to do, and you asked the right questions. And I can remember Ralph Travolone, who, you know, goes out and checks another shadow, he's going to have seven more weeks of zoning and planning board meetings, but, but in any case, I can remember Ralph giving one of the best speeches I ever heard to the zoning board, telling them exactly what was going to happen with that land, that what was going to happen was the solar was going to be approved, and you better watch out because it's also approved, it could be low-cost housing, it could be a housing project. Ralph not only knows what he knows, but he knows what other people don't know, and it's, it's very nice to have somebody like that on, sitting on the planning board. Yep, and I, I could say it to virtually everybody that's sitting here tonight. Now, I couldn't say it if everybody that isn't here tonight was here, but I can say it to everybody that was here. You guys took courageous action, and as a resident of Franklin Township, as a 100-year generational resident of Franklin Township, I appreciate, I appreciate it. I'm not rich, I'm not powerful, but I've been around a long time, and I've seen a lot of things. And Mr. Kelly, I, I know, being retired, I have time, unfortunately, to do a lot of things, and one of the things is, I went back and reviewed the December meeting, which I thanked you for, but I also went back and reviewed the March 21st meeting, and as most of you know, I have a daughter that's an attorney, I have a son that graduated from law school and is Vice President of Government Relations at Rowan University, I have an uncle that taught at the University of Pennsylvania. I have a lot of people in the family, unlike me, that have great legal knowledge, and I also have watched lots of attorneys in lots of situations over the years, and I know what the word obfuscation means. Obfuscation means avoiding getting to what was a very clear and obvious directive. I've taught everything from fifth grade to graduate school. I went back and reviewed what was said at that March 21st meeting. Well, number one, at 3158, where did the other two parcels come from? You can't get much clearer than that. The fifth graders I taught would understand that. And of course, you might not have to do it too quickly in terms of what the needs of the planning board are, but maybe what the needs of the township are, maybe you should answer that. Now, I was also very lucky to meet Rosemary Sayea Flaherty along the way. I made a bad judgment there, too. I thought because she came from Whamstown and somebody else that we're not particularly good friends came from Whamstown, that she must have sprung from that branch of the family. Nothing could be falser than that. I've had a chance to talk to that lady and develop a friendship with her in the last couple months. She's given me some wonderful, wonderful, wonderful emails, and some of those emails, I mean, we could go through the thousands of them that are available, but it fairly clearly indicates who met with who at what time, what township committee member, who wasn't a member of the planning board at that time, but is a member now, maybe you can guess who it is, maybe you can't, met with these developers numerous times well before a redevelopment zone was established, and he met with them with existing engineers that had made a presentation to the Economic Development Committee. Again, whether this rises to international crime, I honestly don't know, but what I do know is this, I was in the room when Mr. Roan discussed that property. I overheard the conversation. What he said was, there is an option on this property, and he was pretty mad about it because he thought he got screwed because he was looking at what the FAS land was worth. So as all these plans were developing, somebody very cleverly, probably through an LLC, got involved in an option on that property. As to who it is, meh, I could take a wild guess, but we're, I'm sure we'll deal with that in the following year, because I have a feeling if Mr. Petrovic and Ms. Vesalo Trace are sitting there, there will be a committee, and it's called an ethics committee, and they have subpoena power. And I would bet any amount of money, Mr. Petch, because you and I have been in the same business for the same time, and we're one of the few people that have been both mayor and chairman of the planning board. I don't know whether that's good or bad to be associated with me, Joe, but you are. I would bet, I know, I, well, I, they were telling the story about, you know, the upcoming Republican Club meeting, and if I go to the meeting, I probably shouldn't accept any food. And I was going to say, the last time I was at the Star Cross Fire Hall, yes, I ended up in the hospital, and Mr. Petch warned me who gave me that hot dog. And again, I know you won't believe this, Mrs. Mertz, but he thought it was your predecessor who particularly picked out that hot dog for me to eat. But again, I would have a feeling that we're all going to have a very pleasant new year, and we're going to have a chance to maybe have an ethics committee and restore some ethical behavior to the rest of the township, because for the part of the people that sit up there, it certainly exists. But lastly, I'd say to some of the professionals, it's very tough to serve two masters. You learn to love one and hate the other, and when you're getting paid by both sides, be very careful as to where it comes down in the end. As to all of you, thank you and God bless you.
Thanks, Senator. Thank you.
I don't know if the mics work or not, but I think everybody can probably hear me. I don't have anywhere near the experience that Mr. Kennedy has in government, but I was taught by two of the greatest teachers ever, that was my mother and father. They told me a lot of ethics, a lot of morals, and black is black and white is white, and you stand up for what's right, and I appreciate where the questions are coming from. I've had a couple people post on some social media that I've read that, why is it coming now? Well, because the 28 times it was asked prior to this redevelopment zone going through from the residents, none of it was answered. 28 times that same question was asked. I answer, I asked it seven times and never got an answer. So I appreciate the board sticking up for us residents, because that's what should happen from every board and every committee in this town. You're all here for us, and if that is bringing business in, that's great. If it's keeping business away, that's great, too. It's just whatever ends up being the best for the residents and the businesses and to work together and make this town grow and be great, and I appreciate what you're doing. I really do. Outside of that, we still have a stye of a dollar store near my house. After, after the grueling changes that Mr. Byers went through, and he's, I wish he was my neighbor instead of the dollar store. In fact, I was hoping he'd make, you know, be an option to buy that. If we can do something there, I mean, it's, I've brought it up many, many times, and maybe things are being done, every week they do mow the trash that's there, you know, so it's appreciated. I mean, it just spreads it around a little bit further, makes the piece of smaller in my yard. The lights are still flickering on and off, and I think three of them have burned out, which is a blessing all by itself, but it's got to get better. I mean, and I know it's not just this board's position to do that, but if there's things that are put in place when a business is built there, somebody's got to follow through and enforce it. You know, whether that be the foliage, the lights, whatever it may be. I mean, they put scrub pines all along the back between that, and there's a gentleman that lives there, Lou, and half of them are dying now. So they, they didn't stop it late before, now they're even worse than a Charlie bound tree. I mean, so every time a car comes in, it's shining on his deck. I mean, he actually built a wall to block it so he could sit outside now. You know, it's sad, and it's things that just need to change. So anything we do to help that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Barbara Halpern, Harding Highway. I was very interested in what Leo Vesalo just said. Is it true that the township lost the lawsuit and is appealing?
Yes. Barbara, that has nothing to do with this board. Michael, if you want to.
Well, it may, because if.
We are not in litigation at all, the zoning board is. We are not in litigation, so that question about the litigation and how far Michael can go is really a zoning board question.
That's not my question. My question is.
I was just asking you.
No, I said, is that true? I didn't ask how far it can go or where you're going. That's not where I'm going.
Michael, please answer the question.
He just did.
I said, appeals been filed.
Yeah, that's, that was, that was my question. My other question would be, if we hadn't appealed, would it come to this board? Because.
No, the board.
No, if we didn't appeal and they won, okay, they won the original lawsuit that said that it was permitted, then would it go to this board rather than to zoning?
Michael and I had that conversation today or yesterday, and I think the answer is we don't know, because originally it went to the zoning board.
Right.
They may take jurisdiction or continue at the zoning board level, or through the courts, it may be sent here to the planning board. So the answer, I think the answer to your question is, we don't know what board at this time it would go to, because there's litigation in the model.
Okay. And who made the decision to appeal?
I'm not going to discuss the litigation. I can't. Not this board. Can't do that.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, how that works, but apparently, even if I was at the zoning board, I shouldn't ask that question?
Well, the zoning board doesn't have an open public portion, which this board actually doesn't have to have either, but still, people are allowed to make comments at the public portion. It actually isn't a question and answer, but it's, you know, your opportunity to comment on wherever you wish.
Okay. Well, it's all very interesting, because I was wondering. My only comment about the solar farm is, unless we rezone that property to agriculture recreation, it's going to end up being paved parking lot, basically. I mean, what it's zoned for is lots of buildings, including possibly warehouses, which it is zoned for in that zone. It's basically going to take what was a farm field and turn it into pavement and buildings. So in my opinion, the solar farm at least could be reversed at some point, and my understanding is they're not even going to use pesticides, they're going to have goats or sheep or something. So knowing that it can be reversed and that solar panels don't cause an environmental damage, and there won't be runoff from the site because it's not a forest that's coming down, there'll actually be a permanent vegetative cover, which will keep the runoff on the site. I believe there would be no net change in runoff, if I'm not mistaken, under the stormwater rules?
It's still to be determined.
Okay, because someone was saying solar panels don't, you know, aren't considered impervious, and having solar panels, there's plenty of water under mine, I grow nice ferns and nice moss under it. But, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Chris Sayers, again, 184 Malaga Lake Boulevard. Just to answer Barbara's question, basically, the issue with solar panels, or at least what I did with research, is the angle of the solar panel increases the rain's velocity, so as it runs off, it creates more pressure on the water when it hits the ground, and it can cause erosion underneath of the solar panels. Not all the time, and again, with ground cover and with the right mitigation, that can be prevented, but. I just have some housekeeping questions. So two months ago, we were supposed to have the Franklin Housing Master Plan Element and Fair Share Plan presentation, but it was canceled. Are we planning on rescheduling that anytime in the near future, or is there any plans to?
It could be discussed under, after we're done with public portion.
Okay.
You're asking about the conflict attorney on the.
Well, I'm just asking when you're planning on rescheduling the presentation so the public can hear the portion.
We have to point a conflict attorney, and we're going to address that issue next, and then, therefore, that, the fair housing will be scheduled at that point in time, once the attorney knows what's.
Thank you, and I don't know if this is the right question to address to Mr. Borelli or not. Are there any updates as to the, because I know it's still in litigation. I mean, there was an agreement, but I know the judge still had decisions to make to make sure we're keeping our bargain with everything we're supposed to do. Are there any updates as to that case?
The fair housing?
Yeah, on the fair housing.
I haven't been involved.
You haven't been involved, so that's more something to ask the solicitor, the town solicitor. Okay, all right, thank you. And again, as Barbara had said before, and Leo had brought up that the solar panels are currently under litigation, which I know you guys said you wouldn't answer questions to that at all, and that's it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Everybody else is getting on their finger in high school. Yeah, thank you. Jason France, 688 Rosemont Avenue. I'm just a little confused, is Scotland Run Park in Franklin Township?
Portion of it is. It's in Georgia, behind, cuts across, and then it cuts across the street to the lake.
So this, this application is in front of the county, a portion of it's affects Franklin Township?
And the rest of Clayton.
Right. So has the planning board been asked to review that, or, I'm confused as to.
We were, and Leo left off of her, we were just noticed that they were having a hearing on the Green Acres and all that, and what we have no, there is no application for the planning board, obviously there's litigation on the zoning side, there's no application on the planning board side. We don't even know if we're an interested party, but if you're telling us that you're going from this piece of property through there, I'm of the opinion we should be at least there and hearing what's going on, so that we're informed, and if it comes to a point where we need to comment on it, we had our professionals there to hear what's said.
Well, that gives my second question is, what professionals, and who's going to pay for these professionals, and how does this board? And how does this board have the authority to send these professionals?
Good question, Chris. Michael, help me out. Well, I think the board, you're the planning board, unless you've got notice of something that definitely impacts township, so I think you have the right to be able to decide whether you wanna comment or not. You could go on your own, make a decision, or you could ask your professionals to take a look at it.
I think the issue with your question yourself, it's not gonna be from a national level in the county, it's gonna be out of legal intention. We're going to ask through the administrator to allow Michael to go, but it'll be paid through the line item of legal fees.
So the township committee's gonna have to approve the professionals they got before?
Yeah, we're at it. It's our, it's our opinion that we should have representation there. We're gonna need to get the township to approve Michael going.
We would make the recommendation, they would give the approval.
Oh, okay. It sounded like you guys had authorized them professionals to go, and I didn't think that the planning board had that authority, right?
They did. They asked us to go. I mean, if Matt Lyons can go, I won't go.
Right, exactly.
Or maybe even that'll go, I mean, we'll decide that, but somebody...
Somebody, somebody should be representing the town. And my initial thought was Michael was the office's own board, and that piece of it, whether he goes or whether Matt Lyons goes, or someone should be representing the township.
So just to be clear, the planning board is making a recommendation to the township committee that they send someone to this hearing?
Is that correct? Jake's trying to put words into what was said. I think the board said you wanted some money to go, professionals to go, so you can have some input directly.
Are we authorized to do that?
I think you are authorized. I think I'm interested.
What would that act from, I mean, it's gonna be like a couple of meetings, right? I mean, you're probably looking at a couple hundred bucks for the thing, I think, or whatever, the building regulations. But...
Yeah, I mean, that's where I have an issue, because I really don't want my tax dollars spent sending someone to that, that meeting. And I don't believe this board has the authority to do that. So that's why, I agree that township committee does, they're elected officials, and I can make that argument to the township committee, so I'm just trying to clarify what's happening here. Is a recommendation going to the committee, or are you telling me that you're authorizing money to be spent to go have representation at a meeting that is outside the purview of the planning board?
And that, the answer to your question is the first one. The board feels that we should have representation there. I will reach out to the administrators tomorrow to express our thoughts that the town should be represented, whether the town decides, the township committee decides to send Mike, or whether they decide to send Matt, that's the township committee's decision. We are an interested party, and I think it's irresponsible not to hear the information that is presented if an application ever was to come forward.
Completely understood, but I'm hearing something different from Mr. Borelli, so...
Actually, no. Dragging along our meeting, but the federal manning law says that the planning board and the zoning board, they hire and contract with professionals.
Correct.
Township committee does not hire or contract with professionals.
Correct.
That's misunderstood a lot of the time. And the township committee has to provide the funding. Now, the township committee doesn't have to provide $500 an hour, but they also can't say, we're giving you zero to make you ineffective.
Jason, what is your reservation on this?
Well, I'm just, again, I'm confused. I hear what Mr. Borelli's saying, I hear what Mr. Pesh is saying, they're not reconciling. Mr. Pesh is saying, you're gonna make a recommendation to township committee that you have representation at the meeting, I fully understand that, and the township committee will make that decision. Mr. Borelli is saying that the planning board has already authorized the professionals to attend the meeting, so therefore, the township committee does not need to authorize the professionals. Did I get any of that wrong?
I think the planning board has the authority.
I can't always. What, it appears that our opinion is we should stay ahead of this.
I agree with Mr. Pesh's position. Is that the position of the board? Mr. Pesh represented that he's gonna send a recommendation to the township committee that you have representation. Is that what the planning board is recommending?
No, and I'll change it a little bit. I'll, I'll advise the township that he can find a way to pay the township representation there. I don't know that we need three attorneys down to do the same job. We need an attorney there to represent the interest of the township, and that's my, that's my desire.
I mean, I don't, I mean, it gives the information, yes. So I don't even know why we need an attorney. I think it's a better person to be here, because they're in the working condition hearing and what to be asking, and so, who imagine sending an engineer for a couple of hours? What you're doing?
I, uh, I don't know. We are very, we are...
He's, you know, listening.
Listen, you guys can have this discussion, I just like some clarification. If you're authorizing it, if you put it in a form of resolution and vote on it, that'd be helpful, because I didn't hear that happen. Again, I don't think you have the authority to do it, but if you believe that you do, you know, feel free to. But you just said, send professionals. I don't know if that's attorneys, engineers, planners, if you could specify who it is you're doing.
I know who's in charge.
So, well, I'm sure, I'm sure you are, so, but, yeah.
I understand your concern, right? So you just expressed, you know, because you don't want taxpayer money to be expended, because you don't know what type of profession, and so I think we're...
I think some further clarity, yeah, would be perfect.
So what we would say is that, you know, look, it's my opinion, folks can only, but I think it makes the most sense to send it in here, right? Because they're the ones with the professional knowledge, and no one asks for, and no one, more than anybody on this board, more than, I'm not gonna say more than 30, but certainly technically better than anybody else to be it, right? So a couple, couple hours of 150 bucks an hour, I mean, look, I'm never gonna, I'm never gonna downplay one dollar, but I think a couple hundred dollar investment is well worth it, you know, based on what we could get out.
That's why I'm not gonna, yeah, argue that, I just would like some clarity, and, you know, that's exactly what's, I mean, for your own benefit, I think you should have that, so, thank you.
Since it came up, as far as being interested in the planning board?
Right, Chris.
And I each had a got a certified letter, solicitor planning board and engineer planning board, with the news from the county, so they consider us an interested party, so it's not my question. And I think it would be remiss of the board not to be interested in this and to make sure you have information wherever it comes from. I urge you to go firsthand. I think what we're missing right now is a plan of some sort, which hopefully will show at the meeting, what are they gonna do, how is the construction gonna take place, and so... So that's, I think, is where we are. I think you do have the authority, but if you don't, I'll hear about that. I think I do, if you're arguing about a couple hundred dollars, it makes sense, because you need them out.
I will reach out to the administrator. I'll reach out to the administrator tomorrow and express exactly the way it feels, and we'll walk our way through it. And Mr. Kelly's right, the engineer is a key piece that, from a legal standpoint, a bridge from a legal standpoint, from an engineering standpoint.
I did talk to Matt Lyons about one of us going. We didn't, we never...
Exactly, yeah. Agreed. Mr. Morris, how are you thinking?
Good. Bill Morris, so, Gavin of Malaga. I have two questions on transparency. One is, could the board consider requiring anyone coming before the planning board, starting in the fiscal year, to bring the audio equipment to use the screens for the people in attendance?
Excellent idea on, on future applications, that they provide the metal stick or their, you know, and we use the monitors. The monitors are there, I think we should be utilizing it.
So a thumb drive would be okay?
But I would recommend, in fairness, for stuff in the works, make it effective with the January planning board, so you don't have somebody scheduled for next month. Oh, my God, I gotta, I know it's not a lot of work, but, look, it can be messed up, messed up. The second issue is, when will the March minutes be made available to the public?
Okay. We talked about it a little bit. No, that's right. We want to refresh the board's memory, refresh my memory on the March meeting. I know there was, that started in a discussion about the minutes not being correct. We worked through that piece of it. Did we vote that evening on March 20, was it?
21st.
I wasn't the secretary at that time, so I don't, I wasn't at that meeting, so I can't.
To my recollection, they were not voted on, or voted down, either way.
From what I, from what I've gathered from the meeting minutes for the last two meetings that I've done, they were not voted on, because in the, in the meeting minutes that I've done, it was a continuation of...
Of the conversation.
Yes, of the conversation.
Okay.
All right, Mike, help me out. March meeting, there was a discussion about the minutes not being accurate, and we worked our way through that, and brought closure to the April minutes and got them approved. So we never made the motion, or if there was a, I think Jake made a motion, but there was discussion on it, so there was never a second and a vote. Do we table this to June for review, or do we, because I don't, the April ones reflect the change, so the change, the, the changes are in the April one, and they're voted on. So what we don't, we don't have closure to the March mute. So should we pull a vote on that and reflect the changes that were in the April minutes, or should we wait and have it reviewed?
I would think now we can't vote, because we're in the public. However, I would make a recommendation that we amend the March minutes as we amended the April minutes, do it in a form of a motion and a vote this evening.
We'll get the legal side of that.
It can be done if the board feels they have enough clarification.
Because there was no objections to the minutes itself, with the exception of the letter piece, so I don't know that we need to go back and review something, other than the fact, the discussion about the letter. Everything else that it missed was fine. Okay, all right, we'll do that and we'll close the public portion.
The March, the March minutes that Bill's asking for, they went to be approved in April, right? So during the April meeting?
But I didn't call for a vote, so I didn't, I never had closure on it. So my thought is that if we go to approve the March minutes now, with the correction reflecting the April minutes, the corrections in the April minutes get noted in the March, we can close it.
Okay, but then April's gotta be, we booked that tonight, this, this language, right, on the first and the second page, has to be corrected also. That will be, those are the April minutes.
Yeah, the April minutes, yeah. Well, and that was the correction on the vote on the, those corrections are in the April minutes.
Well, no, they're wrong.
She's at, the minutes were approved with the correction thing.
In tonight's.
In tonight's, right.
Yes.
And that's your, all right, let me get the public motion closed, and we'll go into discussion later.
Understood. Thank you.
I'll take care of that. Anyone else?
I'm just coming up to get my paper. Don't be scared.
Aaron, you and I have been around enough times, I'm not scared. Okay, anyone else? So you guys have finished the close. I have a question. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Michael, I'm going back to the minutes. The April minutes were approved with the corrections that will be reflected. I have the March minutes still open. If I call for a motion to approve the March minutes...
As amended.
As amended in the April minutes, I can close that up and get it released out there.
But they've been seen and reviewed, those minutes. Not by the board, not by...
We're tabled to, we're tabled to July.
That's my only concern.
Oh, June. We're tabled to June.
That's my only concern, sir. I mean, you can't, you can't do it, but I mean, you're leaving...
Table, we're, we're tableing the, we're tableing the March minutes until the April corrections come out, and we'll, in June, we'll do May and March, June.
See?
Okay. Mr. Kelly, you okay down here with that?
Oh, per review. I mean, give me a couple days.
Yeah, a couple days, yeah.
What I'll do is, I'll go back and review the videos from March and April, and then also make the changes that you suggested. I'm gonna have to review the videos, but I also have, like, a...
Understood. Yeah, no, I, I'll give you, I'll give you exactly it, it's, I'm okay. Okay.
Bill, I think that you're gonna see April 1st, and then you'll see...
Not a problem. I'm getting phone calls about them.
All right.
People are accusing us of hiding stuff.
I'm not hiding, not...
I know you're not...
No.
How can you hide? It's all in video, and we're discussing, not only did we discuss what happened, we're discussing what happened in the minutes, so it's all there.
Okay, the township, let's move on to the conflict attorney for the fair housing. The township committee has, did an ORPA for conflict solicitor, they got two, two law firms that applied. Dasrye, you wanna give us that information, please?
It, Madden, Pat Madden, 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 and I, you didn't have the other?
I don't have the other one with me. I, uh...
I can tie you up.
Yeah, you might have to tie the other law firm, please.
The other is Dasti and Associates, D-A-S-D-I and Associates, from Forkett River, New Jersey. All right, one from Madden, I think, was Matthew.
Oh, I'm sorry. It quit at the end.
Dasti, D-A-S-D-I.
Okay.
From Forkett River, and the other is Madden, Madden from Haddonfield. A couple of the Madden attorneys are already representing the township in some matters, so they're familiar.
All right, gentlemen, we have, we have two, we have two responses to the ORPA. Personally, myself, I've worked with him in the past, and knowing that he's worked on a couple projects as conflict attorney already, the Matthew Madden probably has more knowledge of the township. I don't know if the, or, Mike, do you know if the old law firm ever worked on any township work?
I don't think so. I didn't even recognize the name, frankly, because Forkett River probably wouldn't have much contact there.
I'm inclined to think that Madden is much more familiar with Franklin Township, so, but the choice is yours.
Maybe we need to use an emotion.
I need a motion to appoint a conflict attorney for the fair housing.
We have motioned to use Madden, and we're already using him in some type of form.
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second.
Second.
All right, we'll hold a vote, please.
Okay, Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Malini?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
Yes.
Mr. Swede?
Yes.
And Mr. Tredgum?
Yes.
And Chairman Petz?
Yes.
Okay, Dasrye, we do advise the township, advise the administrator that Mr. Madden has been selected, and that they can, we can move forward with the fair housing application. I believe we can put that on the agenda for July, June meeting.
Matt Lyons is gonna, I think he has to go to court on this again, and I guess the judge will decide when whatever happens.
All right.
It'll either be June or July.
Yeah, all right, so...
I'll let the administrator know.
That, we, we are now, we have selected a conflict attorney, and we are ready to go and hear the, review the plan whenever the township is ready for us to do it. Okay? All right, Michael, close session?
Not necessary.
Not necessary? All right, anyone else have anything else this evening? I'm glad to see Mr. Swede is back. He hasn't missed a beat. He had a little accident over the last month, but I'm glad to see he's back with us here if we're trying to scare the...
He's not pointing a finger at me.
Yeah, he won't be pointing a finger at anybody. Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to do a adjournment.
You definitely, you must be feeling generous.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.